will you please call the roll?
Mayor Peck. Commissioner Angel.
Here.
Commissioner Jennings.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Vina.
Here.
Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
First thing we have is the Citizens Forum. If anyone from the public is here to comment on any items not on our agenda, now would be the time to come up to the podium and give us your name and address. Doesn't look like we have anyone. We'll move on to number four, awards and proclamations.
Item 4.1, Resolution Number 11-6802, expressing gratitude and appreciation to Ronald K. Stiles for his employment with the City of Salina from February 1st, 2001 to March 18th, 2011.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 11-6802, expressing gratitude to Ronald K. Stiles for his employment with the City of Salina.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution Number 11-6802. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 4-0.
Item 4...
Oh, excuse me. Sorry.
That's okay. Item 4.2, Resolution Number 11-6803, expressing gratitude and appreciation to James L. Weiss for his employment with the City of Salina from October 29th, 1979 to March 15th, 2011.
Vice Mayor, I also move that we adopt Resolution Number 11-6803, expressing gratitude and appreciation to James Weiss for his employment with the City of Salina.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution Number 11-6803. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 4-0. Are Mr. Stiles and Mr. Weiss both here?
He's on top there. Mr. Stiles. Mr. Stiles, come here. City wants to express our gratitude and present you with this plaque for all your years of service and give you a moment to make a retirement speech if you want to.
This...
Can you hear it?
This is my second one. I think I'll wait a couple days and I'll come back and try to get the third one. Actually, I started the city in 1968.
Thank you. Battalion Chief Weiss, come on up to your turn. 1979, you sure you don't have a few more years in you?
Well, I had a few before that.
Another plaque representing our appreciation.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Do you have a retirement speech?
I think I'll save it for the 15th.
Okay.
Right, moving on to number five, public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time.
Item 5.1, accept donation of a new fire safety house from the Home Builders Association of Salina.
Chief Mulligan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. It's my pleasure today, and you may have seen it in the paper, to bring us item before you, which is the donation of a new fire safety house to the citizens of Salina, and more importantly, to the elderly and the children who will visit that trailer and be schooled on the right thing to do at the right time. I would be remiss if I didn't step back and let Troy Long talk about how this came to be and some of the important people that made this happen in Salina. It's a wonderful story. About 18 months ago, we were out at Sacred Heart Elementary School, or St. Mary's Elementary School, and someone had talked about the troubles we were having with the home. And someone said, "Well, we ought to start working on getting a new one." And so, an ad went in the paper, or a story went in the paper about getting a new fire safety house. And the Home Builders Association, I spoke with them, and Tom Pestinger really has championed this incredibly. Unfortunately, Tom wasn't here to make, wasn't able to make it today. He had a business appointment out of town. But Tom just kind of took this on and sent some letters out, and him and I went and talked to a lot of different groups. And 18 months later, we raised about $25,000 to buy this new fire safety house, just from the general public. And the house is, it's a lot better than the one that we previously had. It's, gives us the opportunity to educate more kids in a more efficient manner, to do things better, to be more realistic. It also has a storm safety package, so we can educate the entire public about storm safety. And we're also going to be able to use it to do elderly education, talking about cooking safety, fall safety, different things like that. This trailer is handicap accessible, so we're real excited to get it out into the schools, which it'll start the end of March.
Any questions? Thank you to Tom and the Home Builders Association. It's nice to see the public and private cooperation to make, make things like this happen.
What's, you know, what's really fascinating to me is to think about 30,000, over 30,000 of Salina schoolchildren went through our old fire safety house. And the Salina Home Builders actually built our first one, that no longer is serviceable for us. And so, for them to step forward with this is a real testament to the character of our community in providing those things. And I tell you, that storm package, you know, we have so many latchkey children today that, that are home by themselves. And this is really something, you really ought to see this, because the, the sound comes on, the lightning flashes, and there's a news report on the television, and, and it takes them all through that process. It's really a fascinating education experience for them. You know, statistically, the very young and the very old are most at risk from, from burn injuries. And that is what this house is geared to. We can teach safety for the elderly, and, and how to cook, and remember there's something on the stove, teach them some, some skills. Also, there's a door in there for children. You know, we teach them get low and go, and that sort of stuff. There's a door that they can feel up on, and the door's hot to the touch, and lets them know that there's fire on the other side of that door. It's a wonderful tool. And, and thank you to the Commission for supporting the Fire Department. Thank you to Tom Pestinger.
That's right.
Thanks to all the Salina Home Builders for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, we do have a couple representatives I see from the Home Builders Association. I don't know if they intended to make any remarks, but certainly wanted to recognize them just in case.
Anyone? Do you all want to come up? Nobody will make eye contact. That probably means no.
They're all looking at me. Daryl Bixby, with the Home Builders Association, and also State President of Home Builders. We have a plaque here that we had drawn, drawn together. We'd like to maybe have put on the house. It has all the donors that have had something to do with this. And like I say, Tom Pestinger's been a real big factor in this. And we really appreciate it. And it's, hopefully, we get as much or more out of this than we have in the first one, because it's been wonderful.
It has been. It's been awesome.
Thank you. Daryl, will you let all the members know how much the City appreciates all the efforts, and Tom for spearheading it too?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Need formal action to accept?
Yeah, it probably wouldn't hurt to.
Bring it back to the Commission for action.
Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the donation of the new fire safety house from the Home Builders Association of Salina.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the donation of the fire safety house from the Home Builders Association. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 4-0. Move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of February 28th, 2011. Item 6.2, award of contract for the sanitary sewer reconstruction, project number 10-2847, to Stevens Contractors LLC in the amount of $218,090. Item 6.3, award of contract for installation of ornamental metal fence for the north end of Oakdale Park, project number 11-2867, to Dullinger Fence Company in the amount of $21,265.
Did anyone want to take any of these items off the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd move for approval of the consent agenda. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 4-0. We're on to development business.
Item 7.1, application number SP10-1, requesting approval of a special permit to allow construction on a monopole communication tower.
Mr. Andrews.
Vice Mayor and Commissioners, this first application, item 7.1, is an application filed by Dolan Realty Advisors on behalf of Verizon Wireless. And they had proposed constructing a monopole communication tower at the location behind Access Storage on North Ninth Street. And I don't know if you can see this clearly, but this is a summary that's in your packet, but this is a summary of all the locations in town where there are currently either cell towers or antenna sites. And they're kind of in, and some of them are chronological order. But we've also tried to indicate who is, is currently on those towers. But the first tower built was out on Westport Boulevard, and it was built about the same time as the one on Schilling Road, which was actually built in the county and then was annexed into the city. The Markley Tower was out at the East Crawford Recreation Area, and that was done in 2001. The most recent towers, which went before the City Commission and were approved, were the towers at the Salina Stadium, and also one at South High at their track and football field at the South High campus. There are also some locations around town that you may or may not be familiar with, the Kansas Wesleyan Science Building, the Marymount Administration Building, the United Building. These are locations where you have tall structures that you can mount antennas on, that you don't need a freestanding tower for. And there's also one that's on West Grand, just on the other side of Dry Creek there. We include that in our list because it does provide coverage to a good part of the City of Salina. This request is before you, because only the City Commission has the authority to grant waivers or exceptions to adopted standards. And the one thing that most of these that you see on that screen have in common, except for the Westport Graves Boulevard Tower, which was a learning experience for all involved, is that they all are built in compliance with our tower setback requirements, which were included in our 2001 ordinance. This particular quest is to build up the capacity of Verizon's network, and they've identified a need in North Salina. And they started looking in the St. John's Military School area around Ninth and on Euclid. And they decided on the Access Storage site. And the proposal would be to build a 100-foot-high monopole-type tower on a 40-by-60 lease site. And it would be where John has it pointed there, right in this corner here. This line here represents a boundary between Access Storage and property that's owned by Millard Pace, who is the adjoining owner. So this site is about 500 feet west of Ninth Street, 300 feet north of Euclid, and it's within the compound of the mini storage site. Now, you may have some other photos there, John, that, that show that location. But seeing it from the ground, this is what it would look like. It would be tucked back in that corner. And so, it is a pretty unobtrusive location. The ordinance that we have says that an application to construct a tower in a C6 district which does not comply with the performance standards, meaning setbacks, is something that has to go to the City Commission for review. This is on a site that is owned commercially. In a commercial area, there's not a great deal of residential that's in close proximity. The way it is set up here is that the Planning Commission may recommend, and the City Commission may grant a waiver from standards such as setbacks if there's sufficient justification provided. And so, the requirement would be that if you have a 100-foot-tall tower, you would need to maintain a 100-foot setback from your nearest neighboring property line. Example I would give is over on Franklin. There's a piece of property there that's 220 feet wide, and we worked with the provider there, and we figured out that because it was 220 feet wide, he could have a 110-foot tower and maintain 110-foot either side to the abutting properties. In this particular case, the proposal would be only 20 feet, or 24 feet from the south and 55 feet from the west property line. One of the reasons for the setback is not just for fear about collapse of the tower, but also other impacts from the tower, such as ice buildup. We did have a, a learning incident out at the Altel Tower on Graves Boulevard, where that was built fairly close to the triplet property on the south. And Altel learned from that and prohibited any parking in any proximity underneath the tower because of their own damaged vehicles. But the triplet group was surprised to find that the ice could fall farther than just directly below the tower, and there were a number of damaged vehicles over there. So when the ordinance was rewritten in 2001, a requirement was put in that towers maintain the same setback as their height. And that is the primary reason, not because we're afraid the tower will collapse and fall on the neighbor's property. The Planning Commission held three hearings on this, on January 4th, on the 18th, and on the February 1st. That was rescheduled to the 3rd because of weather and traveling conditions. At the February 3rd meeting, following presentation of the report, the Planning Commission voted seven to zero to, in their minds, deny the application, because it, it came in in pieces, and they still didn't think it was complete. And they were concerned about the tower setback, that the neighboring owner to the south did not support having it closer to their property. And the property owner does not have veto authority, but they didn't feel comfortable approving it that close to a neighboring property line. Since that was considered to be a denial by the Planning Commission, the applicant filed an appeal. And any denial by the Planning Commission may be appealed to the Board of Commissioners, which is why this is before you today. Any denial by you would be judged in administrative decision, and the only recourse there would be a judicial review. So for this particular application, we've identified four options. You could concur with the recommendation of the Planning Commission and make a motion to deny the request because of the setback concerns. You could request that the applicant modify their proposal, either to decrease the tower height, or shift the location, or modify the design. You could return this application to the Planning Commission for reconsideration. Or you could overturn the recommendation of the Planning Commission and approve the request as proposed, with any conditions that you think are appropriate. So I, I can't speak entirely for the Planning Commission, but I think their, their two primary concerns was the lack of representation for the application, getting their questions satisfactorily addressed, and the fact that the owner, who is closest to this property, was not supportive of having it that close to their property line. So with that, I'd be open to any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Dean, in that part of town, are there any restrictions on any other kind of development, that particular property?
Well, what we, what we told the Planning Commission was that it's not a certainty that Mr. Pace will own that property forever. It is a platted and zoned property. And the way that this has been addressed in other locations, mostly due to fire spread concerns or something, is you approach your neighbor and agree, obtain a no-build easement or some agreement, that they'll never build a building within a certain distance to the property line. But this is a platted and zoned property, and it, it could be redeveloped at some point in the future with a higher level of development than what is there today. And so, I, I think that was at least partially the concern, not for interfering with what Mr. Pace is or isn't doing with the property today, but that it would impact potentially a future use.
Is there any particular reason why they chose that corner as opposed to the corner against the levee?
Yeah, we, we asked that question, and it is a very tight fit. And this is the wide side of the building, and this is the narrow side here. And if you were to put any, which, we looked at this and said, "We got a levee and a park and all that, couldn't it be up here?" But the owner of Access Storage didn't want it there, because he felt like it would interfere with circulation around. The other thing that's unique about this property is the access, is a shared access easement that comes along here, and there's a gate here. So trucks that, that drop off things for storage or pickup, they, they do this circulation pattern, and the owner wanted it here in this corner, because he felt like having it anywhere else would interfere with vehicle circulation. So it, it's really driven by the owner of the property more so than the desire by the applicant to have it in that corner.
Let me see. My question was, Dean, to reduce the, or decrease the tower height, I take it would defeat the purpose of what they're trying to do?
I would imagine. They, they could speak to that better than myself, but there is, you need a certain amount of height, because cellular service is a, is a site-to-site line of sight, and you've got to have connections between towers. And those connections need to be at a height that gets above houses and other types of...
Right.
...obstructions. So I would imagine that the 100-foot was probably the, the minimum height that would make this work.
And just in recent history of all the towers that we currently have, have any of them ever had to be moved, and, due to a fact like this? He is no longer the owner, takes new ownership, then they have to relocate the tower, or construct something different?
We've never had a tower that's been put up that's been taken down or taken out of service...
Or relocated, yeah.
Yet. But, so our, our oldest tower is 1999. And so, there, there are not a great abundance of towers in Salina. We always try to get them to look at, at high structures or buildings or other places first. And they don't like to build, towers are expensive to build, so if they can find a different place to put it, that's their first choice.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Andrews, property to the south, is that a junkyard, or what's it used for?
Um...
Is that today?
It shouldn't be by definition. It's been a manufactured home dealership and other assorted uses. But Mr. Pace is the only one that could tell us exactly what he's using that for. But yeah, some of the photos would indicate that in this area are inoperable vehicles and other things that aren't directly related to a business that's there. But Mr. Pace is in the manufactured home business, and he's had a dealership there off and on in the, in the past.
And what...
Dean, I'm sorry, go ahead.
When there was damage, you, you mentioned that the, the cell tower constructed over on Graves Boulevard, when there was damage from, was it falling ice on the vehicles below?
Yes, it was falling ice that blew off the tower onto the property to the south.
I take, I take it the personal vehicle owners were responsible for those damages under their vehicles?
Yeah, although I think the, the, I don't remember exactly how it was resolved, but I think the, the owners of the triplet property were looking for some satisfaction from the Altel owners. But I don't know how all that worked out.
So going ahead, you're wanting to just avoid that in the future?
Yeah, the idea being that, you know, the Central Stadium and the South High Towers, they're nowhere close to any other property. Most of the other towers are nowhere close to any other property. So if, if you want to have a tower and drop ice on your own property, that's okay. But it, the concern was that that's a potential impact from having too close a setback.
Right, right. I get it. Thank you.
Dean, there's a comment in here. Mr. Pace contends that it does not give Verizon or its agents the right to drive across the property to get to any tower site. And I'm assuming that's with respect to the access easement?
Right. That was his, we were trying to solicit from him what his feelings were about the location of the tower. And he said his primary concern was he didn't believe that this access easement gave them the right. The legal department for Verizon reviewed that and issued a legal opinion that it does. And it's also been litigated in court before and found to be a public access.
Okay.
So that, that was not a concern. The concern was the setback.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Is someone from Altel here this evening, in case there's questions for...
There was some closing.
For Verizon? Verizon, sorry.
Good afternoon. No, that, that's okay. I mean, there was a merger of some sort not that long ago. And, and in fact, we're trying to address some of those concerns that we, and problems we inherited from that. My, my name is Mike Duchat with Dolan Realty Advisors. I'm based, based in St. Louis. We've done quite a few cell sites in Missouri, Illinois, and Kansas, and Iowa for Verizon. Just to try to keep it short and sweet, and maybe address the hot-button issues, I, it, it would be nice to try to tie both of these together, but I, I understand why they need to be separated, in that we're trying to provide as quality a coverage as we can to your municipality. It's in conjunction with about 40 new sites that'll be constructed in central and western Kansas in the not-too-distant future. With a larger city such as Salina, to do justice to enhancing an existing network, you kind of need multiple sites, and that's why we're kind of addressing two at this time, much along the line what we've already done in the Newton area. We're in the process of doing it in Manhattan with, again, multiple sites, Junction City, Dodge City, municipalities of, of that, with that kind of population. Because, I mean, with that height, being about the 100-foot range, you, you might, I didn't see on the chart the heights of the, of the previous towers, but my guess is that they started in increments of the 250, and then went down 220, 200, 180, 150, 120. And now we're down, as networks mature, in the 100 to 80-foot range. The two, the two issues, I guess, would be in, in the site development... The two issues, I guess, would be in the site development, the setback, and then what modifications we could embrace on our end to maybe alleviate that. First off, you know, Verizon's a huge company, but they still watch their nickels and dimes, you know, just like anybody. So, you know, if possible, we'd like to avoid the substantial cost for any sort of, whether it be a relocation or even a redevelopment. On the other hand, we understand that, you know, there may be some overriding concerns. So while we would prefer the plan as submitted, we can understand why, you know, there might be, again, some allowances that need to be addressed. Again, our goal is to try to make things as seamless as possible so we don't have to come before you sooner than we will as, again, the network is going to continue to mature. There's always going to be holes to fill because it's based, a lot of it's based on usage, not just coverage. And so these two sites are actually tied in. To address this one specifically, we can, well, let me back up a little bit. It's more, in the past, we had the ability to float more than we do now because we do have existing sites, and it's kind of like a beehive. You've got to kind of make it fit just right, also factoring in the usage element. So you've got to go where the customers are, and you've got to make it as seamless as possible, or guess what, you're going to lose the customer and they're going to go to brand X. So we, this is, it's location, location, location. It's not really so much maybe even the height. So in this instance, I mean, if, you know, push came to shove, or we need to make some modification or to accommodate a desire there, we feel like we can do that. It'll be a substantial cost because in our business, if you relocate over 50 feet, you've got to go back through, jump through all the hurdles again with the refiling on the regulatory. So if not at that location, inasmuch as we've made substantial progress with this existing landlord, we feel like he'll, it's a nice win-win situation. We have entertained dialogue with him about the possibility of floating it not to that northern, northwestern corner, but to actually put the base of the pole up against the building and then utilize several storage units as the equipment. Instead of the equipment shelter, then we would utilize, you know, reconfigure and convert some existing storage units and convert that to the equipment. So in essence, we just have a little dog pen or whatever around the base of the pole, which could be, which again, because of the configuration there and the narrower circle radius for the drive, it would be on the southwestern corner or in that region for the base of the pole. Whoops, is that on? Here we go. So in all likelihood, the base of the pole being right there, and then you could put the equipment in a couple, two or three units on that end. Again, we're striving to make it as seamless as possible with an already existing network. Again, we just don't have the ability to float as much as say we did 10, 12, 15 years ago. You know, we're open to any suggestions on how to rectify this, but we still, you know, we still believe in our heart of hearts that the plan submitted is a good one, and considering how remote the location is and the surroundings, we would like to embrace that one, but we understand that, you know, we'd like to offer an alternative and just to show our good faith, we're, the bottom line is we're more interested in providing quality coverage to our customers and not being, you know, obstinate to the point of not showing any flexibility at all.
If you move the tower to the building, then don't we just move the risk of the ice falling from Mr. Pace's property to right on top of the storage facility?
Well, two things, Eric. Yes, and that's the landlord. We're amply insured, and, but, you know, again, I just don't know that that's a, and I could be corrected here, and I'm open to, you know, any feedback, but that, sounds like that was just kind of a one-time occurrence there. It's not like this has been repeated year in and year out, that type of malady.
If this, if this request is denied, then where do you go next? I mean, it seems to me like you've already researched other areas in that part, and this is the best, I'm assuming, the best feasible area despite these little obstacles. So in the event that this motion is, or this request is denied?
Well, we feel like we'll meet, I mean, again, we will meet the requirements, as I understand them, if we make that modification, because if we relocate the pole, we would also, in order to meet the setback, lower the height from 100 to 80 feet, and then you would have the setback, again, from here, from here either going to the west or to the south, you'd have...
Okay, so that answers my other question. You can lower the height, and it's not going to defeat your purpose?
It'll make us return sooner than we would like to. In all likelihood, instead of coming back for another tower as the customer base increases and usage increases, we'll be back in two or three years rather than four or five.
Okay.
To fill the next hole, because there's always going to be a hole, again, depending on the usage and the customer base.
And do you say the folks at Access already approved moving it next to the building, if that's...
Conceptually.
Okay.
You know, again, we haven't gotten to the point of doing those plans because there's a very substantial cost to do that.
But they've accepted that if you lower the height?
Conceptually, yes.
Correct, yes, okay.
When you were putting your application together and drawing these plans up, did anyone ever mention the setback problem that you could possibly have? Or was this something new?
No, it wasn't anything new.
So you knew...
Personally, I've done over 400 of these.
So you knew there was a setback problem?
Well, I wouldn't categorize it as a problem. I knew it would be...
Challenge.
Yes.
Okay.
Because we've, to be honest, we've overcome that challenge innumerable times. You know, again, just by way of showing, by way of whether it's the propagation map showing, you know, the necessity for it, it kind of boils down to, you know, does the municipality want quality coverage or not? I mean, in some respects. We understand, it's always kind of a balancing act. We've got to meet engineering needs, landlord needs, and then we've got to go and meet the permitting process requirements. So it's a, it's not always a straight path from A to Z.
To what extent are you going to lose the customer guarantees that the corporation is striking out? You've said the municipality not wanting quality service, and I don't think as a municipality we want to hinder the quality service that we can provide. But if I just take that statement and start with the fact that the tower sits right here by design at this height, to what extent can that tower not be moved whatsoever to another location without impacting the promise that's being made to the customers by the corporation? In other words, to what extent are you saying that we as a municipality have a balancing act between our codes that are adopted for a reason and the corporation that is seeking to provide the best possible service, and that's placed back on the municipality? Well, I would certainly hate to make a decision and know that a tower, larger or smaller, can be placed in another proximity and have the same impact on the customer base and to be errant in the way that I'm considering this proposal.
Well, if I don't overlook something here, first off, it's, we're not the railroad. We can't just say we're coming through.
Mm-hmm.
Or a utility company. You know, so just, we can't go down that road of what about here, what about X, what about Y, what about Z? Can't you go here, here, and here? Again, conceptually, maybe you can, but again, you've got that, you've got to have a relationship with, and you've got to negotiate an agreement with the underlying property owner. So when you do have a good landlord, like we do have in this specific case, you try to capitalize on that. Beyond that, I would, I would also offer the, just the talking point that from a municipality's point of view, I'm trying to put myself in your shoes, that you might want to also look at it from the point of a co-location capability. If you don't want, or if you want to try to reduce the number of towers, well, then sometimes there may need to be a concession, whether it be a relief or a variance in terms of setbacks or another requirement, say on the height. You might look at it and say, you know what would be better for the community at large? Go ahead and build it at 120. Because then that would enhance the possibility of another carrier co-locating on that, at that location in the future, because we typically only need 10-foot separation, rather than them building another one because they're in dire need of having one at a center line that if someone would have had to foresight, you know, maybe to consider that issue, then they wouldn't have to build another one just a block or two away at virtually the same height or something similar. So in essence, really, the board has a kind of a balancing act too, when you, when you take a look at the bigger picture and what's on the horizon. If we've got a hole there that we need to fill, in all likelihood, the other major carriers, maybe not at the moment, but they will.
How many other locations did you all look at and reject for whatever reason?
In this, in this search area, we took, we took a pretty detailed canvassing. We have had some preliminary dialogue even with the adjacent property owner, Mr. Pace, but again, we haven't reached that point to where we're, or at the finish line for the most part, other than the existing landlord. We have, we did entertain the possibility of going on the north side, say in the park area, but that was flood plain. We were hemmed in by the flood plain, and, which I don't believe was sighted here. The flood plain pretty much just encircles this search area. We also took a look at what we considered to be the first property to the east outside city limits as an alternative, but it was a much, it was an even tighter compound than this, and also had its issues and challenges. So nothing's perfect, you just try to size up the situation. Which one do you feel like works best for everybody considered? And that's how the dominoes fell.
Considering the liability of...
That means they looked into two areas.
...of the ice fall that destroyed the Altel vehicles that we heard about earlier, to what extent of consideration with existing scenarios does that unfold here?
In terms of your role in this matter? I believe in that, in this situation, Commissioner, that you are sufficiently in your governmental role, that if the question goes to exposure from the city's standpoint, in the event of that sort of scenario based on an action that you all might take, I believe you're under the exempt area under the Kansas Torque Claims Act for this type of discretion that you're asked to entertain in this type of issue.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Duchant or for staff?
I have a question for Dean when you're finished with questions for Mr. Duchant.
I think we're done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dean, my question is, is the, I want to make sure I fully understand the process here and the timeline of the process. The application has a November, let's see, November 22nd, 2010 date, and when we look at the type of permit, because there is a request for, in essence, there's a setback variance that's needed, that falls into what we consider to be a Class C-type permit, and the only, the only body that's, has authority to grant the Class C permit is the city commission. So would that mean that the actions of the planning commission are in essence advisory?
It did not start out that way because we looked at this as a application for a Class B permit, but because the material was submitted to us in pieces, it was not, with the initial application filed, that we realized that the setbacks were what they were. And so the planning commission, in their minds, thought they were denying it when in fact they were making a recommendation to deny it.
That's okay, and the reason I ask that is because, as talking, I faintly remembered that the FCC did change the rules with regards to, in essence, somewhat limiting local governments, other governmental entities' ability to regulate these sites, and one of the things they emphasized was the speed of which they made a decision. And I pulled it up, although I can't say that it's a reliable source, but I guess the question is, are we, are we as a staff aware of the timeframe for which the city has to act on this in accordance with the FCC? And that was kind of the reason for my question of when the date actually began, whether we have a starting date, because if it's November 22nd, the number in my head is 150 days for a new tower site, wanting to make sure that whatever we do, that we do it within the timeframe, or take a little bit of time when we have, if we need to ponder this another week, let's say, and make sure we understand those FCC restrictions so that we can properly apply ourselves.
From that standpoint, the application at the January 4th planning commission meeting was not complete because we did not have the map showing the location of other sites and the propagation studies showing the gaps in coverage. So even though it had a November date on it, even as of January, it was not complete. So the date on which we had a complete application would be more in the neighborhood of February 1st.
Okay, thank you.
May I add something to that timeline?
Sure, sure.
Timeline also kind of affects us, you know, for what it's worth in terms of actually constructing these. Budgets are allocated to build sites in specific timeframes. So whatever the outcome, if the proposal as, whether it be the proposal as presented or the modification on floating, floating it to where it does meet setbacks, we would, you know, respectfully request some sort of, if possible, some sort of streamlined procedure so we can get our ducks in a row, because, again, we'll have all kinds of regulatory refilings, again, depending upon your view, to where we have to have these done in such a way for the budgeting for this project to take place, to be able to build this thing as soon as possible for your community. I mean, that is, I just wanted to offer that as a factor in the equation.
Thank you. Any other questions? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
I do have one more question. Maybe, Mr. Andrews, you can answer this, maybe, maybe Mr. Duchant can. In the discussion of the location on that property, with the north being, with the north being a side that's not ever going to get constructed, I understand the proposal of kind of placing... of kind of placing the tower inside the building, which is going to render a portion of the building not used. Why was, or was it discussed, why not put the tower in that northwest location and, and lop off that portion of the building that's required for the truck traffic? It seems like it would satisfy both things, still losing a portion of the building, but locating it to the north edge of the property, where it'll fully meet the setback. Mr. Andrew, did you understand, or whoever might be able to?
Yeah, I think that ultimately would be up to Mr. VanderVort, the owner, who, I said, appeared at the Planning Commission meeting and stated that his preference was, if, if you build here, then you are correct, you probably have to, to lop some of this off to get the circulation around, and, and the other option presented was to put it here with, with the right-of-way there, the distance here, and the distance here, you would probably achieve all your setbacks in that location.
You would achieve the setbacks there.
Mm-hmm. Because the, the property line would be considered, this is Thomas Park, and that would be considered the property line, since this is a right-of-way. So, we would measure from here to Thomas Park, here to here, and from here to here, and hopefully arrive at, at that distance equal to the height of the tower.
Okay.
That raise any public comment? Any other questions? Now, we'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Well, Vice Mayor, I, I empathize and sympathize with your problem. However, if we were talking about 50 feet, something like that, I would be much more, I guess, agreeable to, to, to support a variation. My concern is, and again, I think the adjacent property owner's being very short-sighted in his view of this whole process, and should really reconsider his position. However, if he doesn't, have to respect his rights also as a property owner and future development there. So, Vice Mayor, I would, get my blue sheet here. I would move that the City Commission requests the applicant to modify their proposal to either decrease the tower height, modify the tower design, or change its location, and, I guess, resubmit the application. Would that be the proper method, Dean?
We would have a revised site plan that would come back to you for your review after that modification was received. It would not need to go back to the Planning Commission. You could review that change, and if it was satisfactory, approve it.
And, and seriously explore your idea of locating the tower closer to your landlord's building.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that the Commission requests the applicant modify its proposal to decrease the tower height, modify the tower design, or change its location. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead, ma'am.
Motion passes 4-0.
Commissioners, we will, just to make sure we're within the timeline, the, the source that I looked at indicated that if it takes longer than 150 days, then the court takes your jurisdiction away. We'll verify that, because in the process, we want to make sure, first of all, that we're clear for sure on the beginning date, the total number of days, the FCC rules that would apply, and make sure that we keep this within your discretion. Okay?
Thank you. Let's move on to 7.2.
Item 7.2, Application Number SP10-2, requesting approval of a special permit to allow construction of a monopole communication tower.
Mr. Andrew.
The location you see on the screen there is the aerial photo, and this is Lift Truck Specialties right here. This is Centennial Road, Copper Court Municipal Airport is over here. They're looking at a tower site in the rear portion of this property, and in this case, the proposed setback is 42 feet on the south and 80 feet on the east, rather than the 100-foot height equal to the tower. And in this case, we have Aaron Morrison owning property here, Jeff Harris here, and Marvin McIntyre here, where the, the property is in proximity to, they were notified of the hearing and did not comment in any way on the proposal. And the way the Planning Commission looked at it, if they had letters of support or something, statements from those owners saying that they weren't concerned about the lesser setback, that would have made them feel better, but they felt it was the applicant's responsibility to obtain that support from those owners. So, they also recommended denial of this request for failure of the proposal to meet the tower setback requirements. The only other thing that came into play here, we did submit this application to the staff at Slina Airport Authority, and they were not concerned about the 100-foot tower height in this location. It is not in the path of any runway approach, and the 100-foot height doesn't project through any tower height limitations as far as an approach zone. So, they, they did not have a concern about the proposed location, but the, we did not get comments from any of those owners that they were opposed to it, but the Planning Commission felt like the applicant should have come forward with something from those owners, saying that they have no concern or objection about the lesser setback. So, this comes to you with a recommendation for denial by the Planning Commission, and you have the same four options available here, which would be to concur with the recommendation of denial, or request that the applicant modify the proposal, return it to the Planning Commission, or approve it as submitted. I'd be happy to address any questions about this site.
The adjacent property owners were notified of this application?
They were notified of the hearing and the proposal to build a 100-foot tower, and were given a copy of this plan to show them the proposed location, but we did not receive any feedback from them. In the case of Mr. Pace, we were already dealing with him on another matter, and just requested his feeling on that in a phone conversation, but in this case, we did not get any response from any of those owners. But those would be the three that would be potentially impacted by the reduced setback.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Andrew? Mr. Duchant, did you want to comment on this one?
Please. There's a couple, a couple little different variables here, although in, in many respects, it's a virtual carbon copy of, of similar parameters. The key thing here for us, the good news for us, speaking from our side of the fence, is that if we did float the compound to meet the setbacks, it would be under that 50-foot threshold, where we don't have to start our regulatory process over. So, that's the good news for us. I wanted to make sure, reinforce that, and make sure you're aware of that. Similarly, the, we've got a cooperative landlord, to my knowledge, no objection from any neighbors, so, you know, we prefer not having to redesign it, because it's not our property. You know, it's the landlord's, and that was his, you know, his preference. It is a remote location. However, he has said he would entertain the possibility of us floating this compound north, to where we could meet that, the setback. Perhaps, we may have to steal another foot or two in our reduction. Instead of going from 100 to 80 feet, we may have to go down another increment, because if you saw the irregular-shaped parcel to the east, it, it, it goes in a diagonal fashion, so it's not a rectangle or a square. So, we still might have to tinker with the redesign, and if so, you know, in order to meet the setbacks to the, to the east, we may, again, have to steal another X number of feet.
I was curious about that tower on Graves Boulevard. Was that not far enough west, or is the tower full, or why could you not utilize space on that tower that's already on the west side?
That should, that information should have been detailed in the propagation map there. We, we always take a look at the closest possible tower, I mean, because it's just, again, a numbers game. If we can co-locate, it's to our benefit, if, if it has the appropriate center line, available center line, because it saves you well into six figures, just on construction cost. So, we always, you know, try, we certainly factor that in the equation, if, if it makes sense. Some folks might take that, that's not Verizon's style. They're more interested in what's best for the customer, in terms of the best network possible, in terms of coverage.
Any other questions for Mr. Duchant? Thank you.
Mr. Andrew, what was the date? Trying to look through the different Planning Commission meetings. What was maybe the date that the adjoining property owners were notified?
They would have been notified sometime around the Thanksgiving holiday. So, it would have been, they would have, had to have gotten notice 20 days in advance of the January 4th hearing.
And we didn't receive any negative feedback? We just didn't receive any feedback?
We just did not receive any feedback, and, and nobody came to the hearing.
Thank you.
And so, I said, right or wrong, the Planning Commission thought it was the applicant's responsibility to seek out support from those owners, as far as the reduced setback.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mayor, I would move for approval of Application SP10-2.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Application SP10-2. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 4-0. We're on to administration.
Item 8.1, second reading, Ordinance Number 11-10590, approving a preliminary final development plan and a change in zoning district classification from PC-1 to PDD-R-2.5 on property addressed to 715 North 9th Street.
Mayor, I need to recuse myself.
Ordinance Number 11-10590 was passed on first reading on February 14th, 2011. Since that time, no comments have been received. Is there any public comment today? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk, please call the roll, or I bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Vice Mayor, I move that we adopt Ordinance Number 11-10590, approving a preliminary final development plan and change in zoning district classification, on second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Ordinance Number 11-10590 on second reading. Would the clerk, please, call the roll?
Commissioner Jennings?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Angel?
Aye. Motion passes 3-0. With Commissioner Veneer abstaining, recusing.
Item 8.2, second reading, Ordinance Number 11-10591, vacating the north 20 feet of a 40-foot utility drainage easement on lots 1 and 2, Block 2 of Rifle Edition Number 2.
This ordinance was first passed on February 28th, 2011. Since that time, no comments have been received. Is there any public comment today? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Vice Mayor, I make a motion that we approve Ordinance Number 11-10592, on second reading, vacating the north 20 feet of a 40-foot utility drainage easement located in lots 1 and 2, Block 2 of the Rifle Edition Number 2.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we pass Ordinance 11-10591 on second reading. Would the clerk, please, call the roll?
Commissioner Jennings?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Veneer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Angel?
Aye. Motion passes 4-0.
Item 8.3, Resolution Number 11-6806, appointing members to various boards and commissions.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 11-6806, pointing members to the proposed boards.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution Number 11-6806. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 4-0.
Item Number 8.4, approve a performance contracting agreement for the water meter replacement project, Number 11-2868.
Ms. Tasker?
Thank you. Vice Mayor and Commissioners, the Water Main Replacement Project has been a group effort between the Utilities Department and the Finance Department, and we've been working on this for a little over a year and a half. And for that reason, today, I'm just going to cover the highlights in my staff report, as opposed to a lot of detail, and then allow for some questions at the end. Slina's water system consists of nearly 20,500 water meters, and at this time, 70% are over 10 years old and require replacement. As water meters age, they lose accuracy. Performance Contracting was selected for this project. This allows for a turnkey project to be paid for with revenues from enhanced meter accuracy, future capital cost avoidance, and future operational savings. We tested 270 meters from the system, and the tested accuracy rates ranged from 42% to 98%. The American Water Works Association standard for new water meters is 98.5% to 101%. Siemens Industries Incorporated was selected to provide a census FlexNet advanced metering infrastructure system with Neptune meters. The advanced metering infrastructure solution increases our meter reading efficiency and greatly enhances the services that we can provide our customers. The new meters will have a consistent accuracy, and therefore, we can provide equity amongst our customers. The system will include a fixed-base radio system, where the data will be transferred with radio singles, signals, as opposed to water meter readers going from meter, meter, from meter to meter to read the meters. The project also includes relocating approximately 7,900 meters from inside structures to the city right-of-way. The total cost for the project is $14,634,851. The construction period is 18 months. Construction would begin in April of 2011, and be completed in September of 2012. There are a couple of issues that we would need to deal with during the project that are not specific to the work that Siemens Industry Incorporated would provide. One deals with, as the new water meters are installed, staff will review each account to ensure that customers are not charged additional excess use charges, as a result of the increased accuracy of the new water meters. And second, that pertains also to the wastewater charges. They will not be increased until a winter quarter average, which is January, February, and March billing, can be calculated utilizing the new water meters. The water meter replacement project is included in the capital improvement program. The project will be financed with 15-year revenue bonds, and will be funded through the revenues from the improved meter accuracy, future capital cost avoidance, and future operational savings. Staff recommends that the City Commission award the performance contracting agreement for the water meter replacement project, Number 11-2868, to Siemens Industry Incorporated of Buffalo Grove, Illinois, in the amount of $14,634,851. In the audience today, we have two representatives from Siemens Industries... In the audience today, we have two representatives from Siemens Industries, Rick Pharo and Joe Suggs, and also Peter Johnson, legal counsel. And at this time, staff and those representatives would be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
The only quick question I have is one that we maybe brushed on earlier, but if their life is 15 years, this will doom another commission in 15 years to have to figure out how to replace all of them at once. What's the, what's the thought when we get 15 years down the road, or the reasoning not to try to like cycle a third now, a third in five years, and so on?
We did give a lot of thought to that, because we do have approximately 3,000 meters that we could utilize now that are less than five years old and would have a change out. And through the course of discussion, we felt it was best to start out with all meter accuracy, that we'd be able to keep a good accurate record of what's been changed out and where we stand. And as this project moves forward, assuming that water use and rates and such are same, would appear that we would have the dollars to replace this project in the future. It wouldn't be nearly as difficult as the project as it is this time, because the meters would be moved outside, and the change out of the meters would be a much easier project than it is for this case.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, just one other note, too. This was an item that one of you had brought to our attention that I think it's worth sharing with the public, is that one of the things that during the implementation of this, we will make sure that doesn't happen, is that an individual or a household or business that has a new meter doesn't artificially be put into the excess use charge of our, that we have in place now for conservation purposes. That was brought up, that was something that we've talked about since then, and obviously would not be the intention, so we'll make sure that when we do this, that that's avoided so that we don't put someone in that situation.
Any other questions? Anyone from Siemens want to comment? No?
No questions.
Anyone have questions for the representatives from Siemens? Thank you. Is there any public comment? State your name and address for us, please.
Yes, John Blanchard, 2530 Edward. Just a quick comment, one, I think it's a great idea. It's, water conservation is a big thing, and if we can save water, that's great. The only question I would have is that if part of the cost is going to be used or paid for by more accuracy, and it sounds like we don't need meter readers anymore, my question is, is what are we going to do with the people that are employed as meter readers? Are they going to be laid off all at once, or found another job within the city? And how do they, how do they intend on identifying maybe those cost savings as to that portion of the cost of the project?
Mr. Gage, did you want to address that, or Mr. Franz, if you want to talk about the?
Ms. Tasker?
Tasker, come on up. If you wanted to talk about the money part of it.
Our hope as we move forward as far as the employees is that we'll be able to find a new location for them within, within our departments. And at this time, in water distribution, we have held back on hiring a couple of employees just to save those spots open with the thought that this project would go forward. So, we're already working and trying to get into a position where we can be ready for that when it occurs.
Yeah, so through attrition, we think we can then move people around how we need to and reduce the number of positions, and that savings is actually figured into the performance.
Yes, that's correct. The, under the operational savings, five employees was factored into that at $250,000 per year.
Thank you.
Ms. Tasker, somewhere I read in here that there's some other communities in Kansas that are participating in a program like this.
That's correct.
What's been their experience? Are the numbers that they were given, are they attainable?
Yes, in fact, I don't know if we'd reference Kansas, there's, Olathe is in the process of just completing meter upgrades. We did speak to a location, in two locations in Texas?
Two locations in Texas who have a couple of years under development after doing this and add more better than expectation.
Yes. I'm trying to remember the towns, but I'm missing that right now.
Yeah.
But in Texas.
I'm kind of trying to throw it out.
But, but those that we have spoke to, and we also went to Ponca City, not the same equipment that we're looking at or Siemens, but they were finding favorable experience there also.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I move for approval of a performance contracting agreement for the water meter replacement project 11-2868 to Siemens Industry, Inc., in the amount of $14,634,851.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we award the performance contracting agreement for the water meter replacement project number 11-2868. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 4-0.
Item 8.5, report on bids received for the vehicles and equipment Phase 1 purchases.
Vice Mayor, I need to recuse myself.
Thank you. Mr. Franz?
Vice Mayor and Commissioners, thank you. By the way, one of the towns in Texas was Conroe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would have lost sleep.
Yeah, I thought so. I'd hate to have that happen. This is our, the beginning of our new annual process of acquiring vehicles and equipment. We did receive bids for three items of equipment. As you may recall, we awarded the police car bids a little bit early in order to meet the timeframe on the ordering for those vehicles. The remaining three vehicles that were, are actually three types of vehicles that were included in this, this round are a boom mower for the Public Works Department, several ATVs for the Recreation Program, and a sanitation truck. The boom mower is a new addition to our fleet. It's not a vehicle that we've had before. We do have a small boom mower with approximately a 10-foot boom on it, but this, this new vehicle would have a 30-foot boom extending off to the side of the, of the tractor with approximate, approximately a four-foot mower at the end of it. The use for this is to get into areas that we cannot get into with other equipment in order to mow and trim specifically along the flood control system in some of the retention lagoons along the banks of the river. This is made necessary by changing rules regarding maintenance in those areas by the Corps of Engineers and is required to maintain our levee certification. We have just recently spent, I'm going to say nearly $300,000 to remove trees and growth from these areas where they now require us to keep them trimmed, and of course, we need to keep them maintained as well as possible on a continuing basis. Our sense is, is that this probably will save us enough in, in manual trimming and chopping and hacking to have approximately a six or a seven-year payback on the, on the acquisition cost of the mower. At any rate, our feeling is this is a piece of equipment that is needed for the fleet and would recommend proceeding with the purchase. The ATVs are requested by the Recreation Department. They are used to get staff around events, particularly in the summer, like the baseball fields or the soccer fields or whatever, to get them around from place to place, take care of issues that might occur, and deal with requests and so on. The original request was for three vehicles. Because the bids came in somewhat over budget, that has been rolled back to two, with one of them being rolled into a possible request next year. Last vehicle is a sanitation truck. We always receive lots of bids for sanitation trucks. This year, it was 15, 15 bids. The recommendation is to purchase the third low bid primarily because of the emission control system that is available on this particular unit, does not require a urea system, which will save enough over the life of the vehicle to make up for the difference in the bids. This point of vehicles and equipment program is approximately $61,000 under the estimates and about $34,000 of that is in the general fund. I would entertain any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Franz?
Commissioner, just for clarification, I'll see if Chris Curtis nods his head, but the use of the ATVs also includes actually dragging the fields, and we talked about that before when they were added to the list, just to make sure, they just don't ride from place to place, there's more use than that.
And Rod, you did say that you took something off?
We, we removed one of the ATVs. They had requested three, we're purchasing two. They came in at higher than the estimated amount, and that's the reason for that rollback. The reason they came in at a higher than the estimated amount is up until this year, we've always used air-cooled vehicles, and they switched to a water-cooled vehicle this year because in the environment in which they exist, they don't get a lot of airflow available, and so they tend to run pretty, pretty warm. Our sense is that the water-cooled vehicles will have a longer life, at least in the environment in which we use them.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Vice Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the report on the bids for the Phase 1 vehicle and equipment purchases as submitted, authorizing for the purchase of the boom mower, two ATVs, and sanitation truck.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the 2011 vehicles and equipment plan purchases as recommended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 3-0 with Commissioner Veneer recusing.
Item 8.6, consider requests for Section 888 program funding for the 2011-2012 funding period.
Mr. Franz?
Commissioners, thank you once again. The city receives a part of the 10% tax on alcohol levied by the state of Kansas. That funding is required to be distributed in thirds. One-third goes to the general fund, one-third goes to Special Parks and Recreation Fund, which we use mostly for capital improvements in, in that area. And the final third is required to be used for alcohol, drug abuse, substance abuse prevention and treatment programs, and that is, is what we're talking about here. We would anticipate in the next two-year period, we're going to receive about $280,000 of this money. That is somewhat less than we have over the last several, several cycles. It seems like the last year or so, the amount of funds distributed has, has trailed off to a degree. That being said, we just received the first quarter distribution for this year late last week after I prepared this, and it was quite a bit higher than it was the year before, so go figure. But somewhere on the order of $280,000. We have for many years, instead of operating a program ourselves, contracted with other agencies in the community to provide these services. We have three agencies that we currently contract with, and all three have requested renewals. The first is Central Kansas Foundation. They're the largest agency. They have requested a grant of $200,000 for the two years, or $100,000 a year. St. Francis, who has also requested a renewal, $170,000 for the, for the two-year period. And then the last program is Catholic Charities, who's requested $50,000. The three programs are all qualified under the terms of the, of the, of the funding. They all provide services that would be covered. They do provide a somewhat different package of services from each other, and I tried to lay that out in the report as well as I could. Central Kansas Foundation has a, has a, what I would characterize as the most comprehensive program in terms of the types of treatment they provide, the types of services they provide, and they also provide it to a broad demographic in the community, basically anybody who needs services can obtain it, or at least get on the waiting list at Central Kansas Foundation for treatment. St. Francis, somewhat more narrowly defined scope of services. They don't provide some of the more intense type services that perhaps CKF would, and they focus primarily on, on youth aged 12 to 18. In other words, they have, they focus on a specific cohort in the community. The Catholic Charities program focuses on Hispanic, Latino individuals, perhaps with Spanish as a, as a primary language, and their program is different in that they don't do treatment in the, in the same sense as the other two agencies do. They're more involved in education, referral, prevention kinds of activities. So, they're all a little bit different from each other. The issue is, is of course, is that we have requests for more money than we have, and so the decision needs to be made as to how to proceed. Under the options, I've suggested basically three options, first being is to continue funding in the roughly same proportion that we have funded in the past, and that would result in, in CKF receiving 61% of the funds, or giving the expected $280,000, about $170,800. Awarding St. Francis 26.5%, which would equate to about $74,200. And Catholic Charities, 12.5%, which would be about $35,000. It is possible, of course, if, if you wish to focus the funding on, with more of an emphasis on the more comprehensive treatment, you could proceed with something along the lines of option two. And what I've got there is basically holding CKF harmless and taking the reductions out of the other two agencies. And I've suggested maybe some potential amounts to talk about there if you're interested in proceeding in that way. The third option, of course, would be to do just the opposite, that is, focus more funding on the more specialized and focused, more narrowly defined programs of St. Francis and Catholic Charities and take the reduction out of the Central Kansas Foundation allocation. I'd be try, glad to try to answer any questions. I do know that we have representatives here from St. Francis and from Central Kansas Foundation. I'm unsure if there's somebody here from Catholic Charities.
Questions for staff?
Rod, are those in any kind of priority order, or are you just randomly?
Not, not, not in particular order. I will tell you that the history has been to try to maintain the level of funding at, at some sort of percentage allocation.
Correct.
You know, when funding grew, it was generally extended at, at some sort of equity distribution. We have not been in a position since I came on board of having the funding being reduced in this, in this amount, so it's, it's a little bit of a different circumstance.
But while Catholic Charities doesn't have a license for a treatment and that sort of thing, if they are helping anyone through their information and education, they can refer?
They do refer, yes.
People to CKF and to St. Francis.
And it's, and it's my understanding from the information and presented, presented by the agencies, that they all do cross referrals from time to time.
Okay, okay.
So.
That's, that's good to know. Thank you.
Mr. Franz, what, on the dollars in service to the dollars in funding? Could you give us a, a quick basic feel on, on why CKF is the one that, that is, has such a high multiplier there? What, what is the basic difference?
They have They have a fair number of funding sources. They're a pretty large agency. Their budget's quite a bit larger than the other agencies, so naturally, the amount of funding we provide is smaller in proportion. That's why that number, why that multiplier is so much higher, to say simply levered more other types of funds. In the case of Catholic Charities, for example, I believe our funding is the bulk of their budget.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, and so it's just a matter of how important of a role we play in that agency's program.
Is there any feel of where the need is by numbers? I mean, not monetary need, but basically, the educational and treatment need, where that pans out based upon the difference?
You know, I can't answer that. I mean, the need is everywhere, and I think there are probably elements of all of those communities that do need to be addressed. You could also ask which is most effective, is education and prevention more effective than treatment? You know, and I don't know the answer to that. And my guess is, if you ask the agency people, they would all have...
I wouldn't ask you a philosophical question.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? Is there any public comment? Thank you. Come on up and give us your name, and which agency you're with, or your address.
Vice Mayor, Commissioners, I'm Les Spurling. I'm the CEO of the Central Kansas Foundation. Basically, I'm here today just to say thank you to you for your support in the past, and the difference it makes in the lives of the citizens of Salina. I will tell you that our detoxification services, which we offer 24 hours a day, seven days a week, taking intoxicated individuals off the street from the police, has really increased recently, unfortunately, due to the bath salts of the potpourri issue. We're seeing a lot, an increase in admissions and people that are very ill. I do want to mention that we also started a new program to improve access to services that is open seven days a week, and that's called the Pathfinder Recovery Center. People can come there. We've seen a lot of parents last month, which is our third month of operation. We had 127 people walk through the door without an appointment to seek care for substance abuse issues. We're very proud of that program. Access is one of our keys. So I'm happy to answer any questions about our application, and thank you for your support.
Any questions? Thank you. Thanks for your services that you provide. Any other public comment?
I'm with St. Francis Community Services Program Manager. And again, we would like to also say thank you for the funding that we've received in the past as well. I would just like to add that with our programs, we have increased some of the services that we offer. We have an intensive outpatient program, and we do focus primarily on adolescents. So that program actually provides additional services for the adolescents that might need additional services here in the community. We also have a program where we go into the schools. It's an educational program. We've increased our educational programs throughout the county and here in the city of Salina. Just wanted to say that we do offer those services, and if you have any questions, we can answer those as well.
Can you tell us your name, sir? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Todd Hadnot.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hadnot? Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring this back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. It's, I want to make sure that I make the correct motion. My intent would be that we pass our budget on at a proportion of the existing funding. So, Mr. Franz, is that option one that you outlined? Vice Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the funding for the Section 888 special alcohol programs, as advised in option number one, funding on a proportion to the existing funding.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve Section 888 program funding with CKF receiving 61% of the funds, St. Francis receiving 26.5% of the funds, and Catholic Charities receiving 12.5% of the funds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 4-0.
Vice Mayor, here's something new. I would like to move that we recess into executive session for five minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege, for the reason the public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters, and reconvene at 5:40 PM.
Second?
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded that we recess into executive session until 5:40 PM. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Vice Mayor, if I may quickly, as the matter has developed, there are two items. The first action you've taken, I think, is appropriate. We may very well have action to follow.
Okay.
And there will be a request for an additional five minutes on a separate item.
Okay. We are recessed into executive session until 5:40. We are reconvened after our five-minute executive session. Want to readdress item...
Vice Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
I apologize, I don't recall precisely the time we indicated we would reconvene.
(Inaudible).
Okay. I just noted the absence of the media, and I didn't know if we were ahead of time or not.
I don't think so. We want to address item 7.2 and state the reason for approving that application was notice was given to all adjacent property owners. No adjacent property owners made any written objection or appeared at the hearing to raise any objection. Think is what we've determined, is that right, Commissioners?
Correct.
Is that all we need to do?
That's great, thank you.
Vice Mayor, I would move we recess into executive session for five minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege, for the reason the public discussion of those matters would waive that privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters, and reconvene at 5:46. Second?
It's been moved and seconded that we recess into executive session until 5:46 PM. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We're in executive session. Greg, any further action after this one?
No.
Pennsylvania Supreme Court invalidated a provision in that state's law that barred post-conviction testing in cases where the defendant had confessed.